Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Under a new law, I believe it's one or two years old, Board of Supervisors members after an election and then every two years thereafter, which means in effect here in Bodata, every time there's an election, you need to have a training on the Freedom of Information Act. And that training can be from your local government attorney, or you can go take an online webinar. You have various options. I really appreciate the fact that you're trusting me to give you this presentation on the Freedom of Information Act. I will do my best to make it to minimize the pain of explaining a complicated and very dry statute to you. However, uh, I want you to feel comfortable asking me questions. Please do not hesitate to interrupt me if you have questions about something that I've said, or if I've been unclear, or if I glossed over something that you believe is important for me to address. I also uh, want you to make sure, I, I can always elaborate on something. I can always tell you a war story that I or somebody I know has had about almost anything that you bring up. And I will tell you a few of the war stories that I have that are particularly amusing, at least in my estimation. But if you wanna hear more about how something works in practice, I can always tell you about more about how something has worked in practice at some. Couple of other minor points. First off, when I talked about the Freedom of Information Act, I'm also going to very briefly touch on uh, three other laws. The first of which is the Public Records Act, because there are a few places where the Virginia Public Records Act, which deals with records retention and records destruction will come into play. There's also a few places where what's called the Government Data Collection and Dissemination Practices Act comes into play, which is not actually about public records. It's actually about how you're you uh, what kind of information you collect and how you structure your databases of electronic records. And finally, I'll also be touching upon the Americans with Disabilities Act, because that has some implications for the way that we conduct meetings and what sorts of rooms we conduct meetings in. This room is certified as ADA compliant, and we do have a notice on all of our advertisements. If you need an accommodation, please contact us so that we can do whatever we need to do to make that accommodation. There's a really good reason for that. We have to do that. I can tell you a war story about somebody who didn't do that and it winds up being a little bit amusing, but I can tell you why you do that if you want me to. In any event, um, I'm going to start off by talking about public records. Public records is of less importance to a board of supervisors. Y'all's principal function in the world is to have meetings and to make policy. As a result, co- creation of documents and what to do with management of documents is not as big of an issue to you as it is with say, Ms. Best, who is one of our FOIA officers, or Ms. Bradbury, who is our other FOIA officer, who are oftentimes concerned with the requests that we get from citizens about what documents um, you might want, uh, a citizen might want. So what is a public record? And it's anything written or recorded in any tangible or uh, electronic format that in any way relates to the transaction of public business. What's transaction of public business? Not defined. Um, historically, that term has not been defined. It has been a common sense standard. There is a long history of how people have interpreted that. FOIA dates back to a statute that was adopted, I believe in nineteen seventy-one. There was a way that we had interpreted that for a long, long, long time. Uh, but this past year, the Supreme Court of Virginia decided a case called Gloss v. Wheeler, which in the context of a public meeting, it decided that transaction of public business includes um, a meeting at which members of a body are receiving in, three or more members of a body are receiving information about a topic which may subsequently be on their agenda in the near or foreseeable future. And that arose from a situation in Prince William County. Uh, there were some civil disturbances, riots, for lack of a better term, in Prince William County at the time. Several members of the Board of Supervisors attended a presentation um, from a local citizens group about what was going on. They then later that night went to a Board of Supervisors meeting. It was an emergency special meeting to meet with the county executive. That's what they call their county administrator and the police chief. It's a county that has police. Um, about those disturbances. And the court in that context held the, the meeting where the Board of Supervisors members were just sitting there. Four of them, four or five of the uh, of I believe the nine members, were just sitting there receiving information, listening to what was going on, that that was tantamount to a meeting that needed to, to be advertised. That said that that is transaction of public business. Now, I want you to understand that the definition of public business of what that means is probably going to change this year. The General Assembly has a bill before it because the General Assembly has recognized that what the Supreme Court said in Gloss v. Wheeler is not what anybody's thought since nineteen seventy-one. If you happen to be sitting there at a session in of the Chamber of Commerce and they're talking about what they think about Wawa, the fact that the three of you are there, if you don't say anything, if you don't do anything, you don't talk with each other, you're just sitting there getting some information, that, that that isn't what the General Assembly meant when they said a meeting, right? That isn't what they meant when they said transaction of public business. So there is a probability that that will get changed. But I wanted to point out to you that there's a little bit of unsettledness right now in that area of law, and I'll get to it in a little more um, practical terms in a moment. So now that we know what a, what a public record is, how do you know when you're being asked for it? Well, anytime someone asks you for a public record, that's a FOIA request. They don't have to make the request in writing. They don't have to use the word FOIA. Now, couple of caveats to that. They have to mean it seriously. Sometimes people don't actually mean what they say. We, we all know that. People have a heat of the moment thing and you might need to confirm that, hey, that is this really something you want us to go spend a bunch of hours looking for? You can require the person to give their name and address before you begin the search, because obviously you need to know where to send the response to. It also takes into account the fact that the Freedom of Information Act is only designed to be something that Virginia citizens have the right to take advantage of. Uh, people who are not from Virginia do not have the ability to use FOIA. So a Virginia citizen or a media outlet with substantial circulation in Virginia, they both have the right to use FOIA. But if you're from Oregon or you're the Seattle Daily News, you don't have any ability to, to use FOIA to obtain records in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So that's why you get the person's name and contact information. You might also ask them to please write down what their request is, because you don't wanna get it wrong. Um, I had a situation years ago where somebody called and made a FOIA request and the clerk, the FOIA officer, the clerk at the, this was before the FOIA officers were a thing, but the clerk of the Board of Supervisors goes and collects up all the information, a big old package, says, calls them and says, alright, well, your information's ready to go, uh, bring a check for a hundred twenty dollars. Their head exploded. Not because they had a problem with paying a hundred twenty dollars for all the documents that were produced, but because they didn't think that that's what they asked for. The whole thing could have been resolved if that person had just sent an email making clear what it was that they asked for. The person who was on one side of the phone did not understand what the person on the other was saying. It was a heck of a mess. There's also a certain amount of discretion to be used with respect to uh, refusing to provide things to people from another state. So by way of example, somebody uh, we have a fire in, in the county. Fire insurer has a right to make a, a FOIA for um, the information about that uh, fire insurance claim. Fire insurance company's Atlanta office makes a request. We deny it because they're out of state. Guess what? Twenty minutes later, we're gonna get a request from their Richmond office, and not only are we gonna get the request, they're gonna be annoyed with us too. Sometimes discretion is the better part of valor is what I'm saying. Now, you have two FOIA officers. If you guys, as Board of Supervisors members, get asked for a document, send an email or make a phone call to Lori Best or Tiffany Bradbury first off. Get it off your desk, get it out of your um, you, you guys aren't paid enough to deal with those things. You guys are practically volunteers and I see the list of all the committees that you serve on. The FOIA officer is gonna go and make sure that they understand the request. They're gonna pull the documents together. They're going to make sure and handle all of the administrative stuff beyond that. They're gonna act as a liaison with me if there are difficult and complex questions of interpretation and go through the entire process of responding to the requister. So do we have to respond when we get a FOIA request? Yes, you always must respond. Even if you have no responsive documents or all documents are exempt, you still gotta give some kind of a response. You just, you can just say that, but you have to give some response. Based upon a statute that went into effect last year, the very first response that the FOIA officer is going to give is going to be, well, is either going to be, here's what it is. If it's something that's just on the website or just has a link on the county website, she's just gonna hit the copy and paste link, send it to you. Great, citizen's gonna be happy. But if it's something that's gonna require any investment of time where there might be a charge for it, she's needs to contact the person and say, hey, we're gonna charge you something for this. Are you okay with our proceeding? That's a requirement. That's now a requirement of law. And during that time period, we don't have to do anything while we're waiting for confirmation. Once we've gotten that confirmation, we need to give a response within five business days. Okay? Day one's the day after you receive the request and so forth and so on. Um, if it's really large or difficult to put together, or it's for documents that are very difficult to find, then you can, we can send a letter to somebody and say, it's going to take another seven business days beyond that. That's not a matter of choice. We're not asking them to agree. We're telling them, we're sorry that it's gonna take another seven business days, but you asked us for something that was hard for us to find or hard for us to get to, and consequently, it's gonna take a little bit long. And if the response still can't be completed, you have to try to work out an agreement for a further extension. You can go to court to get an even greater extension. I actually once had to do that. Um, that was way back when the very first Rocky Forge case way back in twenty thirteen. Was it thirteen or fifteen? Anyway, it was a ways back. It was, it was, and, and, cuz you remember looking through all the emails. So the question of always, eh, whose responsibility is FOIA, right? Is it, is it? We, we only, it's not as though the Board of Supervisors is going to vote to have an FTE to sit around and wait for FOIAs to come in. You guys, you, every year, you cut the budget to as tight as it can possibly be, because that's what you do. It's what you, you, you give to the citizens. So we don't have people sitting around waiting for FOIAs to come in. So in order to kind of try to defray the cost, we um, citizens are required to pay the actual cost of, of responding to a FOIA request. I do wanna note that there's a bill that's going through the General Assembly. It's probably going to want, this year, it's probably going to pass, um, which would cap the, the per hour fee for staff time spent on a FOIA response at thirty-three dollars per hour. Uh, I, I have made the comment that, you know, this is an interesting issue, because sometimes what you're asking for is the emails of Nicole Pendleton, who makes more than thirty-three dollars an hour. So we can either have Nicole spend five hours finding the emails at her rate, or Lori Best, who only kinda knows her emails, can go spend thirty hours at thirty-three dollars an hour or whatever and have it turn out to, at the end of the day, wind up costing the requister more, but that's I don't sit in the General Assembly. I'm glad I don't have to make those decisions. What about really sensitive documents? So you guys always remember FOIAs liberally construed in favor of disclosure. And to withhold a document, you need to put your finger on a clear exclusion. You always need to redact the document. If part of it's exempt from FOIA and part of it's not, you need to black out the parts that are exempt from disclosure if you're going to claim disclosure for them.
What would be examples of exclusions? The next slide, please.
Thinking just like you.
Next slide, please.
Some of the most, now, now there's, I wanna say there's a hundred thirty exclusions, give or take, in the code. Um, most of them are things like financial statements from potential concessionaires for the Virginia Port Authority facilities in Newport News. Uh, that's actually, I believe, one of them. Many of them are so extremely constrained that they only come up once in a blue moon, or they only apply to one public body in one specific circumstance. The most common ones that you see pop up are personnel information, except to the person himself. The work product or memorandum of legal counsel. Proprietary information or trade secrets provided by an economic development prospect under an NDA. Confidential information related to a contract. Executive working papers, which is to say, whatever little notebook that Gary keeps all of his notes in or whatever, other things that he has in his office as the chief executive. That stuff is exempt. He needs to remember what y'all want on any given day, right? And doesn't necessarily want the general public to know what he wrote down. Uh, and memorandum prepared only for use in closed session. What's that? Well, you make an excellent point. So those are really the most commonly used exemptions. I do want to mention that there was a case decided this past year called Town of South Hill v. Hawkins, which uh, ex- really narrowed down what we thought the personnel exemption was. We thought that anything that was in a person's personnel file that the HR department compiled as part of their employment was exempt. Well, the Supreme Court of Virginia said, well, that stuff is only exempt if the only reason you have it is due to the person's employment. And secondly, that person has a reasonable expectation of privacy in that stuff. Nobody knows how to uh, interpret this, and again, it's probable the General Assembly tries to fix this and make it a little bit clearer this year. Alright. Remember on our website, there are some things that need to be put up there. Not gonna belabor this. Ms. Best knows it. Alright, turning to public meetings. What is a public meeting? Anytime three or more members of this body, or a quorum, if that's less than three, so electoral board has three members, which means that two of them talking about electoral board business is a meeting. Anytime three or more members of a public body discuss or receive information on public business simultaneously, it's a meeting. Uh, recognizing that the receive language is probably gonna go away on July one of this year. Um, you do have to give appropriate public notice before you have a meeting. You have to give three business days notice. I know it says three days in here, but it's three business days. And you have to post that notice on the website, in a prominent location, and in the office of the chief administrator. So Gary's office. And again, Lori is an absolute ace at this. You just need to tell her and she will do it for you. For notice of emergency special and continued meetings, need to give notice to um, the media and put it up on the website basically as soon as you know about it. Um, agendas and agenda packages have to be made available to the public simultaneously with providing them to the members. That's why you see Lori Best send an email with the agenda package to you and put it up on the county website about twenty minutes later. I mean, it's bam bam. Um, you have to take minutes at meetings. Um, even if it's just a closed session meeting, open meeting at ten oh one, closed session, closed meeting at ten seventy, or ten seventy, ten, ten fifty-five. You need to have those minutes. Um, and it has to be in an ADA accessible space. Uh, you need to allow the public and the media to come in, and they have to be allowed to tape or photograph the event. You can force them to not be disruptive, but if somebody wants to put up cameras right here in the corners and put a microphone up there so they can hear what you say, you shrug. They have a right to do that. Electronic meetings, um, so in general, you can call in if we have a policies permitting it, which we do. We just adopted that in the bylaws. Yes, sir. What do you mean?
We're not ready to.
Okay.
Gary, topics and talking points.
Yes, you can up to a, a, and it's one of those things that it's a little bit of a nuance, right? So if there's an agenda item where we're saying, eh, and where, you know, it has that that front page memo, and then it has all the agenda items behind that. You, we, we can't send it to you and then not put it up on the website if you have that agenda item. But let's say that something's coming up on the agenda and you say, hey, um, I really need to see the uh, I really need to look at the zoning plan for that RYT thing. Can you send it to me? That's okay. That's, that's kosher.
That clears it up. Thank you.
So anyway, you can have electronic meetings. You do have to have a quorum physically present. There are a couple of conditions where a person can call in, where a person's medically incapable of attending, whether they're, where they're attending to the medical condition of a family member, or for personal reasons. Um, but they, there's a limitation on the number of times for personal reasons. It looks as though th- this is going to get loosened up this year by the General Assembly. Um, to be more like fifty percent of meetings for personal reasons, or um, and/or to allow people who have uh, young children to electronically call into meetings as well. There's a couple of bills out there about things like that. Uh, in a called emergency, you can have a lo- one hundred percent electronic meetings. Hopefully, we won't have to worry about that for a while. Special notice for special meetings. Important to remember that things like adopting a budget, doing a bond issue, doing a rezoning, doing a special exception permit. All of these things require more notice. Um, and if the notice is not done right, then the item never legally happened. And there's a movement afoot within the General Assembly this year to limit that so that people have some sense of finality. Um, so that the challenge needs to be brought, you know, within thirty days, whether it's under FOIA or under one of the other notice statutes, so that, you know, you guys can move forward without worrying that five years later, somebody could try to undercut your ordinance. I use the example, the town of Madison up in Madison County, their zoning ordinance had been adopted, I want to say in the nineteen, early nineteen eighties maybe, and somebody attacked it in two thousand five, saying that the meeting notice was deficient in one. Can you imagine? What a disaster for the town of Madison. They fixed it and, you know, but it was stupid and it was a lot of legal work. And so that's actually something that looks like it's going to get fixed this year, in part due to a case called Barry v. Board of Supervisors of Fairfax County, um, which invalidated a complete recodification of their zoning ordinance this past summer due to a uh, uh, them holding a meeting that was one hundred percent electronic in, during COVID, but they had done it improperly. And the Supreme Court of Virginia invalidated their recodification of a substantial part of their zoning ordinance. Alright, so who can speak at a Board of Supervisors meeting? Typically, well, from the perspective of the First Amendment to the US Constitution, it is considered to be a limited or designated public forum. Those two terms get thrown all around a little bit interchangeably. I think it's probably actually technically a designated public forum. But that means the public gets to speak, but only for the designated time, subject to rules. And you can also limit it to topics. For instance, you have just adopted rules that say at the opening citizens' comment, people can only speak about items that are actually on the agenda. At the closing citizens' comment, they can comment on general items, whatever they wanna talk about. As Judge Moon over in the Lynchburg Federal Court once described it, it's open mic night. He, he, he described the public hearing in Lynchburg that way, where it was just public comment for whatever. Judge Moon is, is he's a very, uh, he's a very stately, staid, old, older gentleman and, and it must have been hilarious to hear him call some, that open mic night in open court. Um, you can set timelines, time limits. You can make sure people's comments are germane. My advice to you is always, unless the comments are, are obscene, beyond the pale, and, and the example is that uh, last year, a neo-Nazi called in and made an electronic comment, which is allowed in this, in this particular place in the city of Charlottesville, called in and went on a neo-Nazi tirade, and the mayor, who was the chair of the meeting, shut that down. Uh, that's something that's probably beyond the pale of what you really need to allow. But my advice to you is always, unless somebody is physically out of control or they're completely wild, or they're doing something like that, just cussing up a storm or going on a Nazi tirade or something like that, let them talk. It is so much easier for you to listen to a person who is annoying or a fool for three minutes than it is for you and me to sit for three hours in a deposition, listening, uh, answering questions from a hostile lawyer about why you didn't listen to him for three minutes. So there are time, there's obviously a time and a place for everything, but my advice is to let them talk. Closed sessions. Closed sessions are for specific exceptional items where confidentiality is essential, typically for reasons relating to public bonds. Relating to situations, for instance, where you're negotiating a land deal. And if the others, if the person you're trying to buy or sell the land to knows what price you're willing to negotiate for, you're going to get a bad deal, and that means that that's going to hurt the public. That's why we have things like close, that's why closed sessions exist. It's because the General Assembly has made a judgment that in some circumstances, such as with regard to personnel actions, with regard to hearing from your attorney, with regard to negotiation of public contracts, with regard to negotiation of land deals, with regard to um, economic development prospects that are considering making sizable investments in, in the county, but don't necessarily from their perspective want to know that some third party is who, who, that they might be trying to acquire land from a third party and, and don't necessarily want that to be public. Those are situations in which the General Assembly has made a policy judgment that it is actually really important for there to be some level of confidentiality. And so they have um, set forth, oh, I wanna say it's fifty-ish reasons that you can go into closed session. There's about eight of them that I ever see used, and I know those eight off the top of my head, and I don't know the other forty or so. Uh, because they just don't come up very often, and oftentimes they're very, very um, limited things, things like um, uh, only a school board, for instance, can discipline or dismiss a teacher typically. Uh, or eh, eh, demote, I wanna say, or uh, or discipline a teacher. And consequently, there's eh, there's, there's a closed session for a school board and a teacher, and potentially the school board's lawyer and the teacher's lawyer to have that conversation. Never comes up with the Board of Supervisors. So there, there's a lot of those things that deal with specific situations where only one public body or one type of public body is ever gonna come across it. You do need to make sure and certify closed meetings. It is actually important to do so. Finally, enforcement of FOIA. Enforcement is by a citizen lawsuit. I know that sometimes citizens think the Commonwealth's Attorney or the county attorney has some responsibility to bring a lawsuit against their own locality. Um, we don't. Um, John Alexander isn't going to do so. And in fact, when there's a lawsuit against the locality, I defend you. Okay, as the county attorney. There may be a case in which I advise you, hey, guys, we got a problem here. We better figure out how we're gonna. Solve this before we go to trial or we're gonna have a bad day, but it's my job to represent you. Um, typically, the only relief available to the, to the person who petitions to uh, who brings a petition. Saying that there's been a FOIA violation is an injunction. Um, or a mandamus. A mandamus is an order to do something that you're required to do. Mandamus is an order. Lori Best, you are the FOIA officer, produce those documents forthwith. That's a mandamus. The other is an injunction, an injunction is an order, and this happens more with closed meeting issues. It's an order from a court not to violate FOIA or otherwise to um. Typically, it is to not to violate FOIA anymore, or to produce documents that were used in closed session. I know that in Augusta County, um, just a couple of weeks ago, their board of supervisors actually recorded their closed sessions. It's not clear to me why they did that. I don't know the details of the case. It certainly wasn't. I, I know their county attorney, who's a heck of a smart guy, and I don't know how that wound up happening, but anyhow. They had that and somebody uh, said that they had held an improper closed session. And the court ordered that those tapes be turned over when it found that there was an improper closed session. So sometimes the court will do different things depending on what remedies are potentially available to it. Note that if a violation of FOIA is willful and knowing. Oh, excuse me, a person who does bring a petition under FOIA, they'll get their attorney's fees if they win. They, there, there's not even discretion on that really anymore. If the violation was willful and knowing, then you may have personal civil liability. Um, if you follow my advice or you call the FOIA Advisory Council in Richmond and you follow their advice. It's never going to be willful and knowing. It's just not going to be. You're going to have followed legal advice and have it done your, done your best. To do what you were supposed to do. It's just not going to be a problem for you. Now, a person who destroys documents to avoid responding to a FOIA has to pay a personal civil penalty of one hundred dollars per page. This is one of those things that you can wind up violating by accident. Almost, and I'll give you the example, and this actually happened. So there was a deputy clerk to a board of supervisors, somebody in Ms. Best's position. Somebody made, it was not Ms. Best. Uh, the person uh, got a FOIA request, and it was for some old documents. That we, I say we, I wound up representing them after them, but that they didn't really want to produce. Um, and that was going to be a real pain to produce. So this person who was also the public records officer under the Virginia Public Records Act, and she looked at it and said, well. Those documents were supposed to have been destroyed eleven years ago under the Public Records Act. So I'm gonna do the right thing now and destroy those. That she happened to call me before she actually did that. The county administrator called me and we had this conversation. I was like, no, no, no. I know that that's the right thing to do, but the first thing you need to do is provide them in response to the FOIA and then shred. Don't do it that way. So it's one of those things where it's important to keep in mind because you can kind of, like I said, innocently want. Um, in that situation, it was almost innocent. She was trying to do the right thing. In part to avoid doing a bunch of work, but she was trying to do the right thing under one law and was getting ready to get into trouble under a different one. Now, there is ongoing training and guidance. I'm always here. Ms. Best knows a lot about this. Ms. Bradbury knows a lot about this. Gary and David, having heard this presentation from me or another attorney. About three or four times a year, probably for the last twenty years or so, know a lot about this. You guys have a lot of resources. Uh, don't be afraid to take advantage of them if you have questions. Uh, a couple of bills that might come up. I did mention the change of the definition of a meeting. Um, another one is any corporation that receives more than fifty percent of its annual revenue would be treated as a public body. So its board of directors would have to have public meetings, which um. I don't know that that's going to go anywhere. I certainly hope not. Uh, I mentioned to you the one about the thirty-three dollars per hour. Uh, there's two pieces to that, but I think the thirty-three dollars per hour piece is the one that's going to um. Actually pass, and that there's also a recommendation in the general assembly clarifying that FOIA violations. Do not void otherwise valid actions taken at meetings and or that um. You need to bring an action to challenge that FOIA violation within a definite period of time. So that at a certain point, that body can say, you know what? That vote where we voted to approve that contract, that's a done deal. That's not ever going to be opened up again. Everybody can count on it. There's certainly many places in the courts, and I can say this as a lawyer, there's certainly many places in the courts where the courts force you to have finality. And. Because sometimes an answer you can count on. Even if it's got some warts on it. Is better than an answer that's right that you need to wait years to get. So. That's what I have. Um, I'm open to any questions. I hope that that was relatively speaking, painless. There's actually so much more I could talk about. There's so many more war stories that I could tell you. But hopefully I got, I hit the high points of what you need to know in order to stay out of trouble with public meetings. If I had to say the most important things to do. Communicate with your FOIA officer about making sure that you advertise things. Overadvertise. I know that the city of Danville basically advertises anytime that three city councilors are going to be anywhere. The avalanche of meeting advertisements. Means frankly that. In, in a way, people are, the council, when they started doing that, they were like, wow. People will know all the things we're up to. Answer is yes. They'll see the seven meetings every day that you guys have that you go to. And they won't notice, they won't feel to keep up. That's obviously an extreme example, but the fact of the matter is that nobody's ever lost a case for giving too much notice. That's what I tell our land use people when they grouch about um, how much it costs to advertise land use items. Nobody ever lost a case or had to go through two ugly public hearings because they gave too much notice. I appreciate you. Um, I'm always here for questions, and like I said, you have a lot of other uh, very well-educated professional staff to help you as well. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah.
Um, two or three. Early on, you had a slide that, that uh, identified uh, exclusion, material that can be excluded from a FOIA requirement. And one of them was executive working papers. Can you define what that is or who proves, who validates it?
There, there's not a good definition of that. Um, I know that the governor takes a very expansive view of what executive working papers are. Um, and has never really been called out on it. Um, and include, tends to say that even things that are in the hands of his secretary or. Various people in his office are uh, are exempt under that. I have taken the view on that, that by executive, and, and I think this is consistent with opinions of the FOIA Advisory Council. Which its opinions are helpful, but they aren't controlling law, but I think this is consistent. Is that a person who is the chief executive or pretend, or, or the deputy chief executive of a locality, so basically Gary or David. Their personal notes. About things that they need to do in order to execute the policies that you have made, their conversations with citizens. Are considered to be confidential. I could make a pretty strong argument. That the communications perhaps between the two of them and perhaps with Ms. Best are also confidential under the executive working papers privilege. I don't know how much broader it gets than that. It, it's really about making sure that they can take personal notes to do their job better. Without worrying that those personal notes will become uh, public because. I can certainly say as a lawyer, not all of my notes are necessarily kind to every witness that I interview. And I bet you that the, the same could be said of Mr. LaRue. I mean, even being charitable as a hu- human being as he is. Sometimes you need to write a note to yourself to say no to somebody.
And another one, um, the three days notice of the meeting, that's the meeting. And then also equivalent notice of the agenda, right? Three day, simultaneously, I think is what she said.
Yeah, there's not. And I want to double check. I don't believe that you need to actually some, put out the agenda in any particular time period. That you, could hand you the agenda when you come into the meeting. If you wanted to. You just can't, we just can't provide it to you before it's provided to the public. And uh, again materially, if it happens to take Lori Best a half hour to get it up on the website, nobody's going to shed a tear over that. But more or less the same time period. And obviously, we try to give you um. Basically, three, four business, three or four calendar days to uh, to review that.
So in, in our closed, our closed sessions, the board, you, you or one of your colleagues is in on them. And uh, wraps our knuckles if we start to slay from the, the motion for, for the discussion.
We do.
What about, what about a more conventional meeting where there's nobody who's really qualified? To adjudicate whether something that's said is protected or not. Beg pardon.
You mean in a closed session where there was no attorney there?
Yeah, yeah. Or, or any circumstance where the, the public body may be violating FOIA. And nobody's there to, to really stop the discussion if that's the case. Maybe you don't need that. I, I, that's my question.
Yeah. Well, with respect to sort of a regular meeting. Assuming that you've given three business days notice that the meeting is going to happen. It's awfully difficult for you to violate FOIA. Having it in a public space with three days, three business days notice. And talking business. It's very difficult for you to actually have a violation in that situation. I'm trying to think of how you could. If you had a closed session without an attorney there, which that happens. Uh, some bodies could have that, you know, the historic commission may go into closed session to talk about a recommendation. It would be making to the board of supervisors about acquiring a historic conservation easement, let's say. Could happen. If there hasn't been, and hopefully you would have at least given, shot me an email to make sure that I had given you a little bit of insight into making sure that goes. But you have to be um. You, you have to police yourself uh, in that scenario. I try to be particularly on top of things in things like board of supervisors meetings, EDA board meetings, planning commission meetings. Because the decisions you're making are so important that people. That there needs to be a level of public confidence in the deliberations that you're having. Sometimes the lower level bodies, the bodies that are advisory, things like that. It's not quite as important to have an attorney wrapping your knuckles. You can police yourself. You are grownups. I trust you.
Right.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lockaby. That's a first. Okay, we'll be in recess until six o'clock.